Good morning, everyone, and welcome. This time I will call the Polton County Sheriff's Office's work session of January 28th, 2020, to order, and ask for a list. I'd like to recognize elected person there, Sheriff Terry Gellings, with a nice haircut, by the way. How did you get that kind of haircut, right?
Yes.
If you still got your phone on, maybe it's time to turn that off. And we're so honored and privileged to have this Becky Shady, who was this morning seen as either a five-star commissioner international, to bring us our invitation in this place. Stay in your grave.
And if I may, Chairman Carmichael, before I pray, to invite everyone to join us at one o'clock in the pavilion outside. The Polton Ministerial Association, beginning this month, is hosting community prayer gatherings, and we're beginning with our county government, so we'd love to have all of you join us at one o'clock this afternoon. Let's pray. Father, we've come to you today acknowledging, as King David did, that yours, oh Lord, is the greatness, the power, the glory, the victory, and the majesty. Everything in the heavens and on earth is yours, oh Lord, and this is your kingdom. We adore you as the one who is over all things. Wealth and honor come from you alone, for you rule over everything. Power and might are in your hand, and at your discretion people are made great and given strength. O our God, we thank you and praise your glorious name. Father, we thank you for the privilege to be able to come publicly to pray for our government leaders, for our military service men and women, for all first responders, and every one of their precious families. I pray, Father, for protection, for strength, for health, for abundant grace and great wisdom, for them to be able to carry out the tasks set before them, to serve, defend, and protect each one of us. Father, in this new year of 2020, we ask that you grant our commissioners 2020 vision to see clearly what you would have them do. Grant them peace, grace, and wisdom that will empower them to accomplish all that you have for them to do in this county. Help them, Father, to remember that the weight of this government does not rest on their shoulders, but it rests on you. And may they always seek your plans and purposes for this great county of Polton, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to say, a beautiful start to this meeting. The January 14th, 2020 work session minutes and the 14 board meeting minutes are available for review. Our positive Polton segment this morning, I recognize Mr. Corporal Mike Ellison, who has the job of keeping the Silver Comet Trail safe, so let's watch that together.
In the fall of 2019, Runners World Magazine contacted us at the Polton County Sheriff's Office about this call on the Silver Comet. Specifically, they wanted to know how we can keep the Silver Comet Trail safe and where all the people are. Corporal Mike Ellison, who designed and supervised the Silver Comet Trail, so was highlighted in our article. Being a veteran deputy with the Polton County Sheriff's Office, Corporal Mike Ellison always goes above and beyond his duty. Corporal Ellison is an excellent deputy, and in the epitome of what our deputy sheriffs should be. Every day that he works, he's always out helping the locals, making sure to keep our trails safe. Having deputies out on trails is an extremely valuable asset, because it gives the bicyclists and cyclists and walkers, gives them the added peace of mind knowing that someone's out there keeping them safe, whether or not they decide. Deputies patrol the trails during daylight hours, Monday through Sunday. Whether your bicycle breaks down, or you just need a lift, the Polton County Sheriff's Office always has a deputy out on Silver Comet Trail. And congratulations to Corporal Mike Ellison, who helps keep one of our most beautiful assets, the Silver Comet Trail, safe every day.
Actually, is Corporal Ellison here?
He is, he's right here.
So proud of you, sir.
Thank you.
Put on your calendar for two days from today, Thursday, 11 o'clock, the Costco groundbreaking. And so grateful to have Steve Grimbley here and Angela in the front row that have put that together. And we have a couple state delegates that'll be here along with Costco folks. So it'll be a nice, short event, right there where Costco's going to be located. The board commissioners would like to recognize the fire department's personnel and their instructor on the successful completion of the department's first advanced emergency medical technician program. Chief Kelfer's going to tell us a little bit more about that.
I know y'all see a lot of firemen. I promise there's somebody out there protecting them. Me and Commissioner Hartman's talking in the hallway. When I started working here, we didn't have this many firemen. As you know, call volume keeps going up. We've been dispatched over 16,000 calls, and that's up about seven percent what we had. Most of our calls, 80% of them are EMS and rescue calls. So we knew we had to do something for retention, and we had a lot of students that were committed to want to go to EMT school. One of the biggest setbacks for that was the cost. It cost about $4,000 to go to EMT school. The majority of these people are having to pay for it on their own, and they just can't afford it from public safety. So we decided to go to the State Department of Public Health, Office of EMS and Trauma, and they approved us for a class. And we hired a great instructor, Lisa Lewis. And so the class began last May. The commissioners were very nice to approve that for us and approve the contracts. These young men showed their commitment by signing the contract to come to the school. They had to change shifts in order to do this, and they had to come to school on their days off, time away from their family after working 24-hour shifts, but they stayed committed to it. They had 262 hours of classroom hours, 78 hours of laboratory, and 72 hours of field planning, basically going out and riding on an ambulance and doing that as well. Like I said, they attended these schools on their day off, and they also did these clinicals on their days off. In September, after going, they started the class in May, and September, they were able to go and take their EMT basic class through the National Registry. Ms. Lewis, she ran some figures, and they said on statistics that only 70% of students passed that test the first time. We had 100% pass rate, which is a testament to them and their hard work, as well as our instructors, so we're very proud of them for that. Then they continued on. They're going to the advanced level of EMT, and they're getting ready to take that test now, and I'm sure they're all going to pass, but will have 100% again as well as them. So I'd like to introduce them, and I'm not going to go in order, guys, so I'm going to call your names out in step four to raise your hand, okay? Noah Braden, Casey Dearman, Nick Gregory, Sam Mathis, Ray Rockmore, Jonathan Crandall, Jacob Freeman, Joshua Hill, Jerry Minaw, and Spencer West. And of course, you cannot do that without a fantastic instructor, which is what we have. We're fortunate enough to get Lisa Lewis. Lisa's been involved in EMS for over 20 years. I shouldn't say over 20. You don't like that, do you? She earned her certification in EMT in 2004 paramedic. She also had many additional hours of training and education at the level of critical care paramedic. She began taking part in EMS education in 2012, and she holds an instructor certification through the State of EMS, American Heart Association, and National Association of EMT. Lisa, thank you so much, and I think these guys would agree that they would not have been successful without your leadership and tutelage. We really do appreciate it. Thank you. That's about all I have. I know they want to give her something, and we'll do that outside in the hall. Okay? Well, thank y'all very much. And I'd also like their supervisors to come forward, if we can, and get pictures.
All right, now, that's far. If I can get everybody just... They might want to know. I can have so there, and just come right there. All right, we'll get one more. Okay, thank you.
Good job, guys. Lisa, thank Chief Nelfrey. Got a bunch of studs for me. Okay, so 2020, we're going to begin, starting today, with four different organizations that are very important to Polton County, rotate to ensure that we hear from them at least once every four months. That's going to be the Airport Authority Executive Director, Stacy Andrews here, the Chamber of Commerce, we're going to hear from the Industrial Building Authority, and also the fairly new organization, the Economic Development Organization, with its new director, Mr. Michael Hughes. Today, we're starting out with a report from the airport, from the airport director, Mr. Terry Tibbitts, and it's rumored that he's celebrating his 39th birthday today.
That's right.
Happy birthday, Terry.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start off by saying what a difference a year makes, and I'm looking forward to getting this presentation. For those of you who have watched me over the past almost four years now, I'm coming up on my fourth anniversary in this job, which is pretty unbelievable. This is by far the most pleasurable occasion that I have had to stand before you. I'm going to start off by recognizing my staff. Yolanda and Randy, y'all stand up right quick. The three of us run one of the largest industrial complexes in North Georgia known as the Polton Northwest Atlanta Airport, and it's a handful, and I could not do it... Y'all sit down now. I could not do it without these folks, the first responders. Everybody in the county has been so helpful to us. This is an important piece of infrastructure for the county. I hope you'll see that coming forward as I give this presentation. Frank has given me five minutes, so I'm going to do the best I can, Frank, but I've got a lot to say. First thing I want to talk about is there's a lot of confusion about who the Polton County Airport Authority is. I just want to remind everybody that the Polton County Airport Authority is a public entity, is a part of government, is a political subdivision of the state of Georgia. This is the 1972 law that enacted the existence of the Polton County Airport Authority. The authority is made up of this group. Some people complain that there should be elected officials on it. Well, there are. There are three: the mayors of Hyrum and Dallas, your chairman, Chairman Carmichael, and the other folks that you see there. What a great group this is. They have just been so supportive and have hung in there together as we have moved forward and tried to make this a very useful asset for Polton County. When you have a staff of three trying to do the job that we do, you have to be very versatile. So this is an example of Randy doing his best Men in Black imitation, and now on his shelf, and he covers everything in between. Yolanda calls him the ninja. He's everywhere, he does everything. His official title is Director of Maintenance. Yolanda always embarrasses me, because every time I ask her to do something, she says, "Well, I did that yesterday." So she's always a step ahead of me. These folks are just great. All right, let's go ahead and talk about the elephant in the room: commercialization. Commercialization of the Polton Northwest Atlanta Airport has been the most divisive issue for the past 100 years in this county. I think everybody in there would probably agree with that statement. The commercialization began in 2012, and what I can say with absolute certainty is now it's over. So I'll bring you up to speed on where we are in this experiment to commercialize the Polton Northwest Atlanta Airport. In December of 2018, just before the start of last year, Silver Comet Terminal Partners failed to exercise their right to expand into the entire terminal building, which opened up an exit window for the Polton Airport Authority, which we exercised in that same month, and voted unanimously, in accordance with the contract, to terminate the commercial contract with Silver Comet Terminal Partners. And the last bullet there is the key bullet: all efforts to commercialize the Polton Northwest Atlanta Airport have now ended. So we are running one of the finest general aviation airports in our region. We believe it has more potential than probably any airport in the state, and you're going to see what we've been able to accomplish in the last 12 months. We began the year with the official name on the marquee sign as Silver Comet Field. That was in recognition of the commercialization attempt with Silver Comet Terminal Partners. My board voted unanimously to change the name back to the Polton Northwest Atlanta Airport, which was the official name of the airport, always had been, always was. That is the name by which the FAA recognizes us, and we felt that the marquee sign out front and all of our marketing materials and logos should say, should reflect, the name Polton County. We're proud of that name, and that's what we wanted. Now, the reason I put this sign up here, or this picture up here, is I want y'all to recognize how big things are when you drive past them down the side of the road. My life has been after me to start a diet for I don't know how long, and I have found the perfect diet. I'm just going to stand on the side of the road, and as you drive by, I'm going to look half the size that I really am. But this is what the sign looks like today. FL Graphics did a great job of painting and rebranding the sign. We think that it's a beautiful reflection of our county and the airport that we have. We have, as I said, we've made that change throughout the building, and as you come in from the airfield, this is the first thing you see when you enter the terminal. So let's talk about the infrastructure improvements for the year. We started out the year 2019 as an R2 zoning, and so I decided I could either go buy a bunch of goats and plant a garden, or we could do the right thing and rezone our airport light industrial, which is what it really is. We had to go through the exact same procedure that any other landowner would go through. We properly noticed, advertised, went before the zoning board came before you, and y'all voted to rezone the Polton County Airport as a light industrial piece of property. Y'all know that governments are exempt from their own zoning rules, but we thought it was important to lead by example, and this will be a benefit to the surrounding landowners so that the land use is reflected in the zoning that the airport holds. If you look in the center of the picture there, you'll see why having a field fence around the airport is important. We received a $375,000 grant from Georgia DOT to construct four and a half miles of block line fencing, and that has now been complete, and Bailey now has to stand on the outside and look in, which increases the safety of operations at the airport considerably. The airfield is now almost 11 years old. The painting had become dim, just like with interstate highways, any highways, you have to keep your pavement markings refreshed. We received in 2019 a $150,000 grant from the FAA to remark the airfield. And so from the air, this is what the airfield now looks like. You can read the markings on the landing strip from 10 miles away. This is, again, a great improvement to the safety and the operation of the airport, and we're very thankful to the FAA for that grant. If you look very carefully, you'll see something different about our corporate hangar. You see this little line right here, and you see this funny-looking door on the outside. This is what I came to y'all in April of last year asking for funding for. You not only provided funding, but through the leadership of Commissioner Stover, you also opened up the county procurement system to us. You gave us the county engineer to handle the project, and the county saved over $160,000 in the construction of this project. This is what it looks like open. This is the large side of the hangar. We can now place an airplane in here, fully fueled, in full compliance with all federal, state, international fire codes, that has a wingspan of over 100 feet. So this is a great benefit to the airport and the tax base of Polton County. We were also able during the year to relocate our office space. I used to have a wonderful view of a dirt pile in a parking lot out by a window, and I could not see what was going on on the airfield. We have now moved to the other side of the terminal building, and I can see the entire airfield, air operations, ground operations, maintenance, and any construction jobs that we've got going on. So let's talk about maintenance. This is the window that I can now look out of, one of the windows, and I can see 100 acres of grass. I can see thousands of lights, and you can see there some of the light bulbs are pretty big. Airports are big things. We have over six miles of service roads. We have now five, over five miles of fencing. 75,000 square feet of buildings, acres of concrete, large detention ponds, miles of storm drains, large emergency generators. Again, go back to the aerial picture here. You can see our service roads extending around the peripheral. Keep in mind that from this line to this line is over a mile. So from this service road to the one that you can't see on the bottom of this picture is over a mile and a half. And from this extreme to this extreme, in some places, is as much as half a mile. So, and in some cases, we have two service roads. There's actually a service road that runs parallel, but behind all of the infrastructure of the actual airfield, so that we can get to every inch of the airport and keep it maintained, inspected, and the things that we have to do on the airfield. Economic development. The airport is a major component of economic development in Polton County. This is a picture that we took the night of the Super Bowl. On that night, we had a dozen large jets, this size and larger, parked out in front of the tarmac, that was carrying corporations and patrons to the game that was held in downtown Atlanta. These folks drive rental cars, they stay in hotels, they eat food, but more importantly, they were given a very good taste of hospitality that Polton County has to offer. And we feel that that's an important first introduction to the county when folks fly into the Polton County Airport. Now, let me tell you a little bit about this picture. If you count them, you will see that there are five corporate jets that carried on this particular day about 50 executives. What were they here for? You may be aware that Walmart has just opened the prototype for the entire United States, a clinic for a new way of doing business to treat patients and our community. And by having our airport located about 15 minutes away by car, they could have a waiting car for their airplane as they landed, and in 15 minutes, they could be standing at the entranceway to their property. In the lead-up to the grand opening, Walmart was flying in here, on average, at least every other week, sometimes more often than that. And on the grand opening day, as I said, they flew in five jets for that event. This is huge for Polton County, and this is representative to the kinds of things that having an airport in your community opens up to you. Conference space and events. We have one of the most beautiful conference buildings in the county. We make that available to citizens and businesses. We have two large conference rooms, one upstairs, one downstairs. The downstairs room is often used for very elegant settings, as you see here. This was, I believe, the Hyrum JROTC Annual Military Ball that they had at the airport. This is the upstairs room. We can configure this for various uses. This is set up as just a small training facility. Add a little food, and any event feels better. We have a church now that's meeting at the airport, has over 100 members. So we have 100 folks coming to the airport, watching what we're up to every day, or every Sunday, as they come to worship in our facility. This is just a list of some of the types of events that we've held. The ones I'm most proud of are the school events that we have. You see there, school dances. We have all kinds of training, just anything that you can imagine takes place there. And your event can be held here. If you call our office anytime during regular business hours, we can make either of these rooms available. There's a small rental fee based on what the type of the business of the individual using it, but county government, first responders, aviation events, educational events that are officially a part of the Board of Education, these are all free. We make our spaces free to those folks who need a place in the county to meet. Education. This was a picture taken the day of the high school STEM event. Hundreds of high school students pass through on this day every year, and it's basically a job fair in the sciences, technology, engineering, and mathematics arena. First responders, aviation activities, all kinds of things take place there, and they're given an opportunity to get hands-on and actually go out and touch and feel things of a high-tech nature and understand what some of the career opportunities that are open to them are. We also had our week-long FAA STEM camp. These are some pictures that we took from that. These are 50 high school kids from the local area who were entertained to a week-long summer camp. They were exposed to all aspects of aviation, from maintenance to flight to just anything that you can imagine related to aviation, and I think all of those kids had a really good time and a really good experience. That was the high school version of what the West Georgia Youth Science and Technology Center did the next week, which was kindergarten through elementary school. We had 50 kids come in for that. Now, this was last year's announcement. Notice at the bottom, it says, "Registration closed, campus full." That was last year. There's a new camp scheduled for this summer. If you've got kids in either of these two age groups, high school kids or elementary school kids, we have a week-long camp for them, and we would love for them to come participate. This is a picture of the young kids experimenting with some toys and things that introduced them to the concepts of math, science, technology, and engineering. This is just a list of educational events that we had during the year. The significant thing that I want to show you here is we start with preschool. We had things for elementary, for middle school, high school, for some of the local colleges, for the teachers themselves. The military ball is listed there. We even have the Dallas High School Class Reunion. Most people in here don't realize that there used to be a Dallas High School in Polton County. I love this reunion, because these folks are all over 60, and by 9:00, they were home in bed asleep, and we could go home and lock up the building. So we're opening this to the Dallas High School reunion every year. Military training. We are very proud to be able to offer just an incredible asset for the military to come in and train at our airport. These are some parachute, military parachute jumpers. We have parachute jumps there about once every other month or so, and they use our airfield for training because of the openness that is represented by our property there. This is a DC-3 that's actually still in service. This is dropping one of the elite military parachute teams from 12,000 feet above. So some of these old planes are still flying. Okay, this is the V-22 off spray, and the reason I put this picture up, this is not photoshopped. You see the bolt of lightning that was captured in this shot in the back, and I can tell you with scientific certainty that this is not photoshopped. This is an actual bolt of lightning. How do I know this? Because the Georgia Tech Research Institute has one of the North Georgia Lightning Array sensors now located at the Polton County Airport, and I've got the data on this bolt of lightning, and we know where it hit, how big it was, those kinds of things. And I can tell you, if Dorothy had had this when The Wizard of Oz was filmed, then The Wizard of Oz would have been about a five-minute public service advertisement for how to quickly move into a storm shelter when the big storm is coming. That's what this research is all about, and the Polton County Airport is a part of that. Political cooperation. So up until this year, when I had problems at the airport, I basically had to deal with contractors to come out and do things. Under the new intergovernmental agreement that we have, when I have an emergency arise at the airport, I can call Mr. Scott Green, Director of Operations. He can assess whether or not this is something that makes sense for the county to assist us with. In this particular picture, we had a sinkhole that came up around one of our big storm drains. I called Scott. Within 30 minutes, he was there. He said, "Yep, we can help you." And he sent a crew out there. They dug out the surrounding area, found out what problem was, fixed it, repaired it, and we were back good to go, saving the county thousands of dollars in having to go do this on a contract basis with a local contractor. Some other highlights of the new intergovernmental agreement. It's based on a two-year budget cycle. This was under the leadership of Mr. Frank Baker. He insisted that the airport... He insisted that the airport be on the same financial footing that the other departments in the county and that I have to come before you and defend our budget every two years. We support that. We think it's a good idea. And so we're, we're now in a much more fiscally responsible posture than we have been in the past. All the land, oh, I skipped one. We now have a stable business model for airport sustainability. I'm very happy about that. We have been struggling financially primarily because of all the lawsuits that we've had since the beginning of the commercialization era. And we now have a sustainable business model that allows us to operate an airport and maintain it to the standards that the FAA expects. The next bullet, all land jointly held by the VOC and PCAA. You will remember the ridiculous fight over the 163 acres that we had over the recent past. So the better solution to that is we're going to put all property jointly in the name of the airport authority and the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. I now hold a letter from the FAA authorizing that transfer. We're ready to move forward to go ahead and make that happen. We're very happy about that. We can't commit the county to any financial obligation without a public vote from your board. So this, this ties us more closely together to make sure that as we go forward with enhancements, modifications to the airport, if it's going to, if it's going to commit the county to anything beyond our, our regular intergovernmental agreement that we already have in place, I have to come to you or my board has to come to you for permission. And as demonstrated by that, this $160,000 that I've already alluded to, that we were able to save because y'all turned us into being able to access the full procurement system of Paulding County Government and we were able to go get a fully competitive bid on that renovation of Paulding Airport hangar, the big hangar, and considerable cost savings for the airport. Okay, looking ahead. This is one of the flying assets from the Museum of Flight. The Museum of Flight has now signed a contract that will bring a new hangar to, to our campus. This is the architect's rendering, so this is, you know, this is preliminary, but this is about what we think this is going to look like. Those of you familiar with our terminal building, you'll see to the left of the terminal building, at the edge of our existing parking lot, is where we intend to put the Museum of Flight. The Museum of Flight will bring opportunities for touching historical artifacts that will allow kids in particular to remember what our past was all about. We're very excited to have them a part of the family. This is the, my famous dirt floor in the office building that was a shell in 2015 that has sat here untouched for five years. And so this, this week, yesterday, I was able to put on the window the building permit that is now going to finally get this space built out. We have a signed contract with the museum to put them in a third of the building. One small space is going to be a 24/7 pilot's lounge so that our pilots fly in after hours. We'll have a place where they can do flight planning, go to the restroom, get a pack of crackers, those kind of things. And then we've got about 2,000 square feet which will be usable for just general business there in this building. The floor above that, I call it the grand ballroom. I have several ideas that we could use for this. We don't have funding to do anything with this space yet, but some of the ideas that have been put forward is possibly making this a grand ballroom. This is a 5,600 square feet room. It would be one of the largest meeting rooms in Paulding County, roughly the same size as the space over at the senior center and the only space of this type west of the building that we're in right now. So this would bring convention capability to the western sector of Paulding County. Chattanooga Tech, we know that they're planning to build an AMP school on our property. We work hard every day to try to work through the bureaucratic processes of having that property released so that it can be sold to the state of Georgia. We're making good progress on that. We're not done yet, but that is moving forward. And then I saved one set of thank yous for the very end. You guys have just been amazing to work with this year. The things that you have just seen in this presentation would not have been possible without you. I'm, I'm excited to be able to stand before you and say that we've got some big things coming that we're excited about for 2020. Go Team Paulding. I'll be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have to make.
So you don't like movies? What about this?
Oh, you want to see the movie. You heard, you heard there was a movie. So we like to say Paulding County Airport is where business takes off. Notice the eclipse of the sun. Do you have any idea how long you have to work with the sun to get it to cooperate? Something like that. Business is taking off in Paulding County and we think it starts at the Paulding County Airport. Any other questions that you've got to make?
That's not what I was asking. Last Full Measure.
Oh, Last Full Measure. Oh, okay. So Last Full Measure was actually not a 2019 event for us. It was filmed earlier than that, but it is now out. And if you go look at the trailer for Last Full Measure, if you look very carefully, you'll see the Paulding County Airport prominently displayed in the trailer. I've not yet seen the movie, but they spent a couple of weeks there filming and several of the scenes are filmed, in particular, the scenes inside the hangar where they were having the ceremony in the movie. Samuel Jackson and some other famous actors were there and so Paulding County was prominently displayed. I can also tell you how a season three of The Ozarks ends, but I'll keep that to myself.
That's a great report, great job. Wonderful, have good relationships with the airport.
Thank y'all very much.
Terry, I just want to say thank you for all you've done. It's been a great year working with you guys and I want to thank Ryan for all of the help along with Frank, Chuck, and Rollins, and Dave. I can't wait to see what this year's going to hold out there.
EJ, thank you.
Terry, have you announced the dates for the STEM camps for the 2020?
Yolanda, you got those?
June 22.
Now, that's the high school stuff.
The high school, yes, aviation, yeah.
The junior, or the elementary school?
I believe it's June 22nd.
June 22nd.
The old age in June. I can speak firsthand to the, just the high school. So I know he was 15 last year and he's 16 now and by the end of 2020, he should have his private license.
Awesome.
So he's excited about aviation and that kid has made part of that. So anybody watching this, if you, you have high schoolers sitting out there, it's a fun week and they feed them well and get to do a lot of stuff. Everybody's enjoying it.
Thank you.
Terry, I do appreciate you too. And if Julie comes up and asks you about the end of season three with Ozarks, please don't tell her.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no pin awards this morning. First report from committee or department is from Ms. Mary Carol Sheffield from the Department of Defense. And Mary Carol, always great to hear from you and you did a great job.
Good morning. I just wanted to come forward and I left a little annual report for everybody. There's extra copies in the back of the room if anybody else is interested in the annual report from extension for 2019. First off, I want to thank you for the wonderful job that the county did in renovating our building early in the year. We moved out, come back in in a matter of short order and the building's in great shape on the inside. The outside's going to be on great shape. If you come visit anytime soon, bring your mukbeats and call us before we announce our report. But it's going well and we are really grateful for all of that. So thank you. We wanted to highlight a few of the things that have happened this year that are, we're super proud of. We have a new 4-H agent, Josie Davis, who started a little over a year ago and she's done a great job taking on our 4-H program, very active 4-H program. It's had a lot of success in the past and she continues that legacy. One of the things that she did is she's worked really hard to maintain and increase the number of donations and grants that fund the outreach and the impact that we can have with our Paulding County Youth. She raised almost $12,000 in 2019 to support $2,500 in camp scholarships for 16 first-time campers to help us get 79 kids to public speaking contests. The older kids spend a whole weekend at Rock Eagle and it's free to them if they are willing to go and do the public speaking contest. Public speaking is scary. So these young people have a lot to be proud of and we are super proud of them. Other of our, our students, we have several really great leadership examples in our 4-Hers this year. One of our students was elected by her peers in all 159 counties to serve on the 4-H state board. And she's been doing that proudly for the year. She's represented Paulding County well around our state. We have another student who was elected by student 4-Hers from 39 counties in our Northwest District to serve on the district boards. And we have great kids in leadership in our county. We have one student who mastered at state congress in their public speaking contest. And we also have three talented 4-Hers who are members of the cast of Clovers and Company, which is a performing arts group at the state level. So if you are interested in performing arts and you've never seen Clovers and Company perform, you can Google them or check them on YouTube. It's pretty impressive and three of those kids are our own Paulding County 4-Hers. Those are some of the major highlights for 4-H. For Ag and Natural Resources, we had a great year and I always like to attribute a lot of our success to my fantastic volunteers and several of them are here today. Master Gardener volunteers gave more than 2,000 hours of volunteer service this year and that's at a value of more than $50,000 to the county. It's like having an extra full-time employee that I don't have to pay for. They do excellent outreach in our community, help people with gardening education, to help people improve soil and water quality. And they also raise money every year at plant sale and for the last 11 years, they've given a $1,000 scholarship to a local high school student who's going away to technical school or college. They continue that legacy this year, so over that last 11 years, they've given away more than $11,000, the money that they've earned. Super proud of all the work that they've done and again, grateful for the support that you offer. It is a collaboration between the University of Georgia and the county and you all have been so supportive and I'm so thankful. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
How's the DB gun team doing?
They're doing great. They're having a great year and they're getting ready to set off to competitions and hopefully we'll have a team on the road to Arkansas for the Daisy Nationals in July.
Great job, Mary Carol.
All right, thank you.
Under the consent agenda, consideration of these following items, enumerated number two, adopt the water system job classifications for a maintenance team leader and number two, a maintenance mechanic. The, the next one is to approve a memorandum of understanding slash indefeasable right of use with Greystone Power to provide access to vinyl between the water treatment plant and the administrative building. Enumerated number four is authorize Parker Fiber to make connections to Greystone Power's father with a not-to-exceed amount of $50,000. And number five is declare items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through action or trade. It's from the, the vehicle is from the Environmental Health Department, unit 350, a 1999 Ford Ranger. Would any of the commissioners like to place any of the consented in the items on regular visits? Hearing none. Under old business, we have none. Moving into new business, discuss action to adopt resolution 20-03, approving property exchange and the granting and accepting easements with Naturewalk Development Company Incorporated and authorizing the settlement and release of the claims to be reported on by our county attorney, Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, this is a, been going on for about three years now. So we call a statutory land exchange. The background of this is that back in the early part of 2017, the county had a need to expand the buffer inside the existing landfill up on Ivy Gull, up on Gullidge Road. When you do a statutory land exchange, it authorizes a government to exchange property with a private landowner as long as certified appraisals which come from that show that what the county is receiving is worth in value at least equal to what it's giving up or what it's receiving is perhaps worth more than what it's giving up. In early 2017, because of some deep title issues, this exchange, while approved here, did not go forward and back, I believe in late 2018, the motion approving the exchange was rescinded. Following that time, because of some of the efforts that Naturewalk Development had engaged in anticipating approval and completion of this exchange, the county was served with an anti-light notice for claims of lost opportunities, some expenses that Naturewalk had made. Those claims against the county listed in the anti-light notice were in excess of $350,000. This exchange, this resolution that is before you here, resolves those claims and approves and completes authorization for the exchange. So what will happen upon your approval? There will be a 17-acre piece of property that the county, that the county acquires from Naturewalk. In exchange, the county will convey to Naturewalk a 17-acre parcel of property which is raw land which has not been developed. Additionally, the county is going to convey three easements to Naturewalk. One of those is a limited access easement for emergency purposes and for construction access purposes. Two of the other easements are what we call recreational path slash utility easements with Naturewalk intends to construct cart paths for the citizens that live in that section of Naturewalk in the Seven Hills area. Naturewalk will also be conveying to Paulding County a utility and ingress, egress easement. Rather than the $350,000 plus settlement, the tentatively agreed upon settlements for $50,000 for a release of all claims brought by Naturewalk pertaining to this exchange. That is in some primary elements of the, of the settlement agreement. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Now, the next new business item would be number seven, but I have overlooked a category of, on the agenda, which is public participation on agenda items. And this person and leader in our county wanted to speak on the next item, which is number seven. That would be Mr. Tom Morse, speak on the ordinance 20-01. Sorry to skip over you there, Tom.
Okay. I've been skipped over before. Good to see you this morning, Commissioner. I want to speak on this ordinance and I want everyone to understand my comments are really designed to find a better way to address this particular ordinance. I have some questions and concerns about what is going to be proposed to you today, about moving this ordinance more to a state code rather than county code we have now. I learned about, last month, I learned that probably the Marshal Service would be asking you to change this ordinance to go with a state code rather than the county code you have now. And I hope that my comments today will move us in that direction where we can find a better answer to what is in the current county code. I did a lot of research over the weekend about state code and after looking at those state codes, I got very concerned that actually if you just go in and adopt the state codes, you might actually put more work on law enforcement here in this county rather than less. And the reason I say that is when you look at what the state code has to say, it talks about vehicles can be parked. It doesn't say how large or how small or anything, but vehicles can be parked if the right front wheels are within 12 inches of the curb. That's what it says. And if they're on the other side of the road, it can be the left front wheel. So I think that when you have, if you have something like that in the code for Paulding County, you're going to have a lot more people parking on subdivision streets. If it's not in a subdivision, the wheels are supposed to be on the edge of the paved section, but I think it may generate more work for the Marshal Bureau and for the Sheriff's Office. So my, I have some questions here and I'm sure the Chief has will respond to a lot of these when he does his presentation, but will they be adopting or are they proposing to adopt all sections of Georgia Universal Code about roads? Like I said, I think it'd lead to more work for them. One section, I've already mentioned about 12 inches, but what happens if you've got two, two vehicles parked on a subdivision street? They're going in different directions, they're both parked 12 inches from the curb and believe me, I've tried going through something like that in a subdivision before. You're very limited in getting through that section, that section of the road. I worry about school buses and emergency vehicles coming through there and so I just wonder if this part of the state code would not be bad for the county. It also has, one of the things that I'm real concerned about is safety. It also has, one of the things that I'm real concerned about is safety of children in subdivisions or anywhere in the county. If you have a lot more cars parked on the streets, how many of us have seen a child dash out in front of a car, parked or behind a parked car? And the disability is less because of the car being parked there or a big van or camper that we've seen on some of our streets. The driver has less time to react to a child dashing out of the road. And I may be wrong, but I'm just convinced that we'll see more parking on our county roads, especially in subdivisions, if we go with the state code. We also have problems with some vehicles being parked on sidewalks. And I know this is not something that's been enforced in the past about vehicles being parked on sidewalks. I've seen children have to walk out in the street because they can't get up the sidewalk, go to a bus stop. I've had to walk out in the street because I couldn't use a sidewalk. This presents a danger, not only to children, but everyone, if the sidewalks are blocked. And my question is, the state code requires that sidewalks not be blocked, that cars not be parked, or vehicles not be parked on sidewalks. So I hope that that's something that could be involved in any code that we have here, whether it's the state code or reversing in some ways the county code. And I'm sure that Chief S. will have some reasons to go ahead and, you know, to look at this today and approve this today. I think it's premature. I think we really need to take a closer look at all the answers, all the questions and some of the answers we might come up with to make it better for law enforcement in this county. And my recommendation would be to table this proposal for today and just set a time for a group to come back to you. And what I suggest, your consideration is that you look at someone from law enforcement, from the county school system, from a resident, from each designated by each commissioner, the fire department, and then just look at this in total. How will this affect first responders? How will this affect residents? Will it generate more parking in subdivisions? And then come back to this board. You could set a time, the next meeting, two meetings now, whatever. So I'm not talking about a long period of time, but let's just step back and look at this. Some of the topics I've listed and for discussion if this group decides to go this way, I know the Marshal Bureau has a tough time dealing with complaints about parking.
Mr. Morse.
One minute?
Make a motion.
May I have two minutes, please?
Motion to extend my time.
The motion is our second.
Second.
All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Please continue.
Thank you. I'll hurry to it. I know one of the problems they have is they, they can go out and there might be a birthday party or some other party going on in the neighborhood and they have no leeway based on the county code right now. They have to write a ticket if cars parked in the street. That's something that needs to be looked at. The real critical time here to me is from 7:00 in the morning till about 4:00 in the afternoon, when kids are going to school, when school buses are coming in, making sure that cars and larger vehicles are not parked on the streets. So I would hope that that would be something we could look at. One of the things I picked up in looking at other counties, Carroll County has a code enforcement officer. I've been a believer along, in a long time, that we could have code enforcement officers who are not certified law enforcement, but working in the Marshal's Bureau or somewhere in the county and then turning things over to law enforcement when needed. So I would hope that you would look at something like that. Cove County has two public ordinances, two public hearings a year on any changes in ordinances. And I would really like to see if we're going to have any changes in this parking in the county. We have a public hearing on this, but it's going to affect a lot of people throughout the county. And just to get the citizen input and look together how we can make a better system and ordinance here in the county for parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morse, for your input and your concern. So the next new business item is Chief S. discussing action to adopt ordinance 20-01, an ordinance amending section 62-63A B C regarding the unlawful use of a county road.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner. I want to give a thanks. We've always had a great relationship with working with Tom from the Marshal Bureau. So hopefully that can alleviate some of his concerns. This revision would be a continuance of our ongoing review process of the county ordinances that we're currently doing, that those warrants that need updated and/or advised for clarification. This particular ordinance was enacted in 1998, so that kind of tells you how old it is. We wanted to look at that. And that being said, this revision will get us up to citywide surrounding counties, but it will still protect the integrity of our roadways as it was designed to do. Examples, just as Tom had touched on, we have citizens that right now, if they want to have a birthday party or a family gathering or Christmas, folks over, they just are subject to getting a citation if they're parked on the roadway. And as we all know, a lot of these driveways, they just can't handle more than four or five cars. As far as the state law is concerned and some of Tom's concerned about emergency vehicles, I think he mentioned the fact that two cars could be parked parallel. State law actually does prohibit that and that's what we would be enforcing along with the health and sheriff's office. I think another one of his concerns was the fact that school buses couldn't get through, once again, in parallel. It would alleviate that. As far as creating more work from the Marshal Bureau, I can assure you, no law enforcement agency is going to do anything that's going to create more workforce. I mean, it's just not something we want to do. We want to be able to remove some of these things that we're doing that, that we can enforce through state law and that we can move forward with things like litter and cleaning up the county. And I believe we can work, work on this and get it, get it on shoes, we can do that. So that being said, I'm open for any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add just one comment before your questions. Just so the board is clear, the state laws regarding parking setup, Title 40 of the Georgia Code, those are actually already in effect. It's not a situation where we would opt in or select to have those in place. Those are the laws of the land in Georgia already.
If the Marshal's Office isn't going to take care of this any longer, who is going to be responsible?
Well, now, we will still be responding if somebody has a parking complaint to come out and look at it, because we never know exactly what we may have. It's kind of like, you know, somebody calls in a, you know, a civil dispute, well, it may be something different. If somebody calls in a parking violation, it may be actually that they're storing the vehicle in the roadway and it's a junk vehicle. So we still need to respond to our citizens and help them out with that and determine what we actually have. So we will still be responding.
It's a tough problem, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, but I think it's something that we've looked at for a long time and with the help of our county attorney. I appreciate all this help with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number eight, discuss action to approve the awarding of a contract with Musco Lighting at a price not to exceed $177,500 for the lighting of the multipurpose field at Burn Hickory Park. This will be funded through SLO. This is already here. Do you spread it up here?
Yes, sir. I'm ready. Since the initial construction at Burn Hickory, we have added an additional multipurpose field. We refer to those fields as rectangles or diamonds, you know, depending on what activity there is there. This is a rectangular shaped field. When we did that construction, we did not have the funding to install the light, which you imagine is severely limited, the amount of use that we can get out of it during certain times of the year. Lighting system out there now is a Musco system. Musco is a part of a national co-op called Sourcewell, very similar to state contracts. All the different types of projects and materials are already vetted. We are a member of the county of that co-op, which allows us to preclude the bidding process with this. Since the initial system is Musco, we'd like to go back with the same one. And this is LED lighting. It comes with a rather extensive warranty that's up to 25 years, even for bulb replacement. So with your approval, we'd like to get started with lighting that filled up down there.
Any questions or concerns? Sounds good. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Number nine, discuss action to approve a non-compensatory contract extension on the Phase 2 finished water transmission main project for Garni Construction. Is that more or Mr. Combs? Thanks for being here, Kelly.
Yeah, definitely. Good morning, Commissioners. Before that agenda item, I just wanted to give you a brief update on a milestone that we hit with the Bristol Creek Water Supply Program. If you recall, sort of our critical path was getting the pump station at the river ready to pump and we did achieve that last week, so that's a positive thing. Sorry to say that our scheduled inspection of the dam with safe dams did not take place as originally intended. It was scheduled for the 15th of January and because of the rain event during that period, they were not able to come out. So we've rescheduled that for next week and so we're optimistic that they're going to come out. We're going to, we're going to pass that inspection and then we'll be able to start the filling process and pumping water into the reservoir. This particular item is associated with the finished water pipeline, which is the line that comes from Walden Place down here to the booster pump station that's being constructed behind this complex. And Garni Construction is the contractor associated with this. They essentially had three different elements during the construction that caused them additional time. One was the amount of rain that occurred exceeded what was shown within the contract in terms of number of rain days. The second area was a very difficult crossing of West Memorial. They were tunneling that, that section underneath West Memorial and it was a combination of very hard rock and then also two-phase rock that made them take a lot longer. They had to do some actual hard rock boring, but then they had to switch to actual hand mining for part of that crossing. So it took them a significantly longer period of time than anticipated. And the third area is the booster pump station. When they actually came and did the excavation to start the subwork underneath that structure, we determined that the groundwater surface was much higher than previously measured and anticipated. So we had to make some adjustments to the, the pipe chase that goes underneath that structure and do some redesign and so that slowed down that process. The good thing is, Garni has been doing an excellent job and this, all of this work, although it impacts their schedule in one way or another, it's being done within their current contract in terms of cost. So there's no cost change associated with any of these items. And these items don't impact the anticipated schedule for being able to convey water to the residents of Pauling County. So this, this component is not impacting any of the other programs. We have to fill up the reservoir, get that to a level to be able to bring water into the plant, start the plant up before we can start conveying water down to this, to this location. So this adjustment in their contract time does not prevent us from providing water to Pauling County as planned out in the overall schedule. And as I said, it's a non-compensatory time change, so they're not looking for any additional costs associated with the, with the additional time, which is the grant of time. And this extends their, their contract till April 13th. Their current schedule has them completed actually in the March timeframe, so we anticipate they finish prior to, prior to what they're asking for here. With that, if we have to answer any questions, anyone may have.
With the delay in the safe dams group coming out, that will definitely extend being able to use the water?
Yeah, so with, like I said, right now, we're assuming things are going to go well with safe dams. We get the green light next week, then we'll be able to start the filling process. We'll be able to fill the first third of the reservoir very quickly and then for the second third, we have to do two, two foot per week maximum. And at that point, it's really going to be looking at the water quality. We don't, we want to make sure that that stabilizes because you're bringing in water. You want to make sure that the water quality is stable before you start the treatment process, because once we start the plant up, we don't want to have to shut it down. We want to actually, you know, produce the water and start the conveyance. So, so we're working through that whole timeframe, but it's all really contingent upon what the water quality looks like and it's contingent upon us passing the safe dams inspection. And so we're, we're looking at the March/Aleppo timeframe for starting the plant up and, and working through all the startup associated with the plant and then sometime after that, actually sending water to the distribution system.
Commissioner Hart volunteered to taste the water.
I did want to just add that there is a period of time in here where we'll be treating water, but not releasing it to the distribution system. In addition to the testing of the systems that Kelly was mentioning, we have a regulatory requirement for a 30-day test period where the state will be monitoring the treatment process along with us before they will allow us to put it out into the distribution system.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next three and the last three are going to be called Mr. Jones' show here. I'll just read one at a time and Georgia can respond one at a time. Number 10, discuss action to approve the chairman entered an agreement with Kelly Landscapes Management, Inc. for the roadside right-of-way turf maintenance services contract in the amount of $168,615.40. The contract provides for finished mowing, string trimming, edging and litter pickup of approximately 66 acres, plus 10 and a half acres of median and 55.44 acres of roadside shoulders on various county roads. Mr. Jones.
Thank you. As you said, Chairman, this item is for the, actually the first renewal of a contract with Kelly Landscaping Services, originally termed by the Board of Commissioners on March 26, 2019 Board Meeting. The contract provides for services for provided right-of-way turf maintenance for grass medians and grass shoulders on various county-owned maintained roadways. You know, the county has installed grass on some of our DOT projects and we desire to keep the sod healthy, weed-free and viable to enhance and maximize the aesthetic benefits of this investment. As you said, this contract provides for 66 acres of turf, grass, median shoulders for finished mowing, string trimming, edging and litter pickup. Also included are three cycles of fertilizer and herbicide. The cost for the budgeted work for all these quantities is $168,615.40. The work is to start in mid-March and goes through the end of October, a total of 17 cycles. You know, Kelly Landscaping Services has performed these turf maintenance services for us over the past four years and we're pretty happy with their work so far. The current contract that y'all approved in 2019 had the provision to be extended up to two years, provided we, the Kelly, were satisfied and agreed. We would like to pursue this and Kelly has indicated their willingness to pursue this contract this year also. If I can answer any questions, if you have any.
Day seeing none. The number 11, discuss action to approve the chairman entered an agreement with Yellowstone Landscape for the fiscal year 2020, county-wide shoulder maintenance services contract in the amount of $872,313. The contract provides multiple cycles for mowing, trimming and litter pickup on 523 miles of county roads and 21 miles of four-lane state highways.
This is, item is for the first renewal of a contract with Yellowstone Landscape that was approved by the Board, I think, May 14, 2019 Board Meeting. The contract, this one is for a one-year contract for performing right-of-way shoulder maintenance services for the county, which includes mowing and litter pickup. The 2019 contract did include the option for renewal period for up to two years at the discretion of the county in agreement of the contractor. As you said, we're providing for mowing, trimming and litter pickup for 523 miles of county roads and 21 miles of four-lane state divided highways. The mowing and trimming on the county roads are performed up to four times per year. Mowing, trimming and litter pickup on the state highways, state four-lane divided, will be performed up to three times per year. The contract also has the provision to fund up to five cycles of winter off-season, throughout the season litter pickup, three cycles on these state divided highways, Highway 120 and Highway 278, and two cycles on the county roadways. The first round of mowing will begin in April 2020 if this is approved. The first round of mowing will begin in April 2020 if this is approved. The cities of Dallas and Hare participated in the last contract. Dallas, for their portion of 278 within their city limits, and Hare, their portion of US 278 in their city limits, and their portion of the evil road. As you said, the cost of this work for all budgeted items is $872,313.00. Last year was the first year we used Yellowstone Landscaping. We're satisfied with the work, especially towards the end of the year, once they got to know the county, our expectations, and recommend going forward with this contract. And if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Would you comment, please, on coordination with the detained convicts or how that blends in with these two contracts?
Again, you know, we, we work with G-Dog, the Sheriff's Department Attention Group. We try to, you know, this, this road, this contract is set up for the four-lane divided and basically 520-year miles of, you know, county divided roadways. Obviously, these are going to be scheduled items throughout the year. The first one will be in April, the last one will probably be in October, another cycle probably sometime in June, sometime in August. So again, I think we have the latitude, you know, we can communicate with G-Dog and Sheriff's Department to make sure that roads are getting cleaned where they need to be. We do coordinate with our partners.
And finally, number 12, discuss action off course, chairman entered to a contract with Southeastern Engineers in the amount of $98,500.99 for preliminary engineering design services for the Ridge Road widening project from State Route 92 to Laird Road.
Again, Ridge Road is a two-lane minor, a two-lane roadway located in close to Oak Street in South Park of the county, which connects Highway 92 and Highway 61. The section of Ridge Road between 92 and Laird Road has approximately 8,000 cars per day, vehicles per day in this area right now. Ridge Road in this area busts the frontage of the new Graystone Power Corporation headquarters that is being constructed now. There are several parcels along this quarter in this area that have commercial zoning, and we expect this area to experience the new road, particularly once the Highway 92 project is completed, which I believe has a schedule of July of 2022. You know, traffic projections for Ridge Road indicate that it will not operate separately in the future, particularly once the four-lane widening, or it's actually in that area, six-lane of Ridge Road is completed. You're going to have long queues of traffic on Ridge trying to get onto 92. The storage lanes are not adequate to handle that traffic. You know, we believe it's in our best interest to get ahead of the growth, to provide a quarter with sufficient lane lengths and proper access management to handle the current existing traffic. Southeastern has submitted a desirable of both four-lane section, longest part of Ridge Road, which is approximately 277 miles, for a cost of $98,500.99. This section of road is actually located in close to, that's what I have. Have any questions?
Any questions for our DOD Director? Thanks, Mr. Jones. That is the conclusion of our regular business. No one has signed up for public participation on the items, and we've added a 2020 kind of a comment section where any of the commissioners could, they can announce about something or whatever. Well, remember prayer at the park at 1:00 if you're available, and we do have a requirement to go into executive session for real estate pending potential litigation. I'll need a motion for that. I'll make a motion by Commissioner Davis, if you're hard to beat, you know? Is there a second? Second, by Mr. Caper. All of the papers say aye? Aye. We stand adjourned for executive session. We have adjourned from executive session and call us back in, meeting back in order for the regular session. Is there any additional business that needs to be covered? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Stover. All of the papers say aye? Aye. We stand adjourned.